Hey Jessica, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Jessica?
Can you hear me, Kevin?
Hey Jessica, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Kevin.
Okay. It took a little bit to get going.
No problem.
Can you see me?
Yes.
Thank you. Are we missing Jean?
Hi Kevin, I'm here.
Ah, there we go. Good deal. Thanks. Okay then, I think we have everybody and it is 6:31. So we will go ahead and get started. Call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic, which stands, a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. For roll call, we have everybody here. I might take a second and talk about the rationale for actually both of the meetings this week. Since March of 2020, the school district has been dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic. As the pandemic intensity has fluctuated and guidance from health officials changed, the district has adjusted its operations. In May, the Board of Education adopted a plan for summer school that we hoped would carry forward into the fall. And that had a metrics-based pathway to mask becoming optional based on guidance from the St. Louis County Department of Health and CDC. At that time, all pandemic indicators have been dropping and we were very close to meeting the CDC low transmission threshold. Since then, things have changed. The pandemic intensity has increased and guidance from the CDC and health officials has been changing. This week, the Board of Education is holding two meetings. The first was held Tuesday evening. It provided for up to two hours of public comment time. There were 18 speakers who addressed the Board of Education on Tuesday. Various opinions were expressed and we appreciated the stability of the speakers and their concern for our schools regardless of their position on masking. Tonight is our second meeting. We had originally set aside an additional 30 minutes tonight for public comments because we had less speakers than we expected during the Tuesday night session. And with 18 speakers who signed up for tonight, which is about an hour of speaking time, we made the decision to forego the 30-minute limitation. And everyone who signed up for tonight will get an opportunity to speak tonight. This is a time for public comment. It's not a time of discussion with the board. Board will be listening to comments tonight and we'll have a discussion of action later tonight. These meetings are being held virtually because not all board members can be physically present. Also to minimize risk for those participating and to ensure speakers are heard by the board without interruption. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We are going to do public comments now. As I mentioned before, we're going to have all of the people who signed up, the 18 people who signed up, be able to speak tonight. Speakers were required to sign up online. Three minutes will be allotted per person. For groups, a spokesperson will be given five minutes to speak for the entire group. Time limits will be enforced. Time will begin as a speaker begins and speakers will be turned off at three minutes. Speakers may be interrupted if they discuss matters that might violate board rules or policy. One thing I want to make sure everybody realizes is that tonight, with the way we're doing this, everybody has three minutes and we will have a time where at three minutes and 10 seconds, the feed automatically cuts off. So if you are approaching three minutes, please try to finish up that thought. For those watching on YouTube, and if any of our speakers promote misinformation that violates YouTube policies, it is possible that the live stream could get cut off. That would not be a decision we would be making and we wanted you to be aware of it. The meeting is being recorded and the meeting can be shared upon request. Let's begin the comments portion, please.
Our first speaker this evening is Vivian Crawford. Vivian, feel free to unmute and start your public comment.
Can you hear me? Start.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay.
Sorry?
Hello, my name is Vivian Crawford and I'm a sixth grader at Washington Middle School and formerly from Mosaic Elementary. A few months ago, I heard my fellow classmate's speech, which was nothing but lies. I'd like everyone to listen because I do not want my brother to grow up at Mosaic with power-hungry parents. Unlike my classmate, my parents did not help me write this speech. This is simply from the heart. Yes, this classmate did clean off his teacher's desk and yes, he did clean out another classroom. But the difference is that he asked to do it instead of being forced. The classroom he cleaned out did not have a teacher present because that teacher was busy teaching kids whose parents wanted them to stay at home. Mosaic has done a tremendous job despite COVID. And may I remind you that Mosaic got some of the highest map testing scores in the district. I love music as much as the next person. And yes, our music teacher yells, but you gotta understand that he's been in choir, live performances onstage, and with a bunch of kids screaming and shouting, it's bound to be loud. But under all these, but under all these conditions, he is funny, sometimes giving history lessons, but does an amazing job. The part about us not being able to see our friends, yeah, it's sad. But at the same time, I've had people I would never talk to who are now my best friends, as well as getting to know people younger or older than us. I've had the complete opposite experience than he talked about. But there's one more thing I would like to point out. Masks. Masks are a pain, yes. But it's for health reasons. Imagine if no one wore masks. We would all be sick. No one would probably be in this Zoom call right now. I've had breathing troubles with the masks, but it has never affected my experience at Mosaic. I know it's not my classmate's fault. I don't want my brother in second grade to be blinded by power like some parents are. I don't want Mosaic to become that school that has poor education just because of one speech. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Mary Howard. Mary Howard, please feel free to come off mute and start your public comment.
Good evening. I would just like to thank the board not only for making this time available, but for everything that they have done. The past year and a half has been an amazing ride that I think no one could have ever anticipated. And the commitment that they have done, have shown as we've gone through this has been amazing. And I'm asking them to continue this commitment, continue the commitment to the health and safety of our students. Our jobs as parents is to protect our children. Our teachers' jobs are to educate them. We can protect them by keeping them in masks and keeping them healthy and keeping them in the classrooms so that the teachers can actually do their jobs, educating our students. I have the utmost respect for what the teachers have done over the past year and a half as they've gone virtual, as we've offered the Melville at-home option for our students. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate the time, the effort, and the dedication that they've put in. I also know that our students do so much better when they're able to stay in the classrooms and be have that in-person learning. I can't imagine another, having to continue to pull our students out of the classrooms on a regular basis for quarantine because we do not enforce masks in our classrooms. My daughter is 11 years old as of two weeks ago. There is no vaccine option for her. She's a sixth grader at Washington Middle this year. With the option for seventh grade and eighth graders to not wear masks, that is a continual exposure for her. I don't want to see that happen. I wear a mask daily, 10 hours a day while I'm at work and have since I went back to work in April of last year. It's not hard. It's not fun. But I've adjusted. Our students have adjusted. Our teachers have adjusted. And that's what we have to do to make sure that we keep them healthy and in the classroom. Thank you very much for your time and your dedication to our students in the district.
Our next speaker is Deanna McKelvey, speaking on behalf of Melville NEA.
Thank you, board members, for providing a second opportunity for stakeholders to address you today. I wanted to thank all the people who have reached out to me thanking me for speaking on Tuesday in favor of masks. No one truly wants to wear a mask. But there are many of us who listen to doctors and scientists and we understand the necessity for them. Melville School District teachers, the Melville School District teaches 11,000 students. Every one of them has the right to an education. We need to wear our masks for the children who are dealing with health issues, for the children who have grandmas and grandpas, sisters and brothers, mothers and fathers who are all struggling with pre-existing conditions. We learned last year that students learn best in school. We must wear our masks for the sake of keeping our students in class. Our students, our schools must remain open. We must get back to normal. Wearing masks helps us serve an entire population, our entire population, and ensures the health and safety for all. Again, thank you to the board and our district administrators for your leadership. You are in an impossible position. Whatever decision you make will only please part of the district. But wearing masks is the right decision for the safety of all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rimmel Howard. Rimmel, please come off mute and you can give us your public comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, yeah, so I have, I have a question about the mask. The recent mask mandate was recently suspended this, this week. And I was wanting to know where the Melville School District stood on mask mandates. I personally, for health reasons, believe that it should be optional. And there is, unless somebody shows me some type of research as to how masks help, I haven't seen any. I would like to see that research before I send my school, my kids to school with masks. Hello? That's, that's all I got. So I just need to, I need, I need to see some research. I understand parents are reading a script of needing masks, but I need to see some research that says that masks help because I haven't seen any.
Okay, thanks for expressing that and telling us that during the comments, we don't actually respond to things like that. But if you send us an email, we could probably send you some things. Or respond to you that way.
There isn't any that you could send me.
Okay. Thanks for speaking.
Our next speaker is Angie Weber.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Good evening. I would like to thank you all for allowing me to talk this evening. I would also like to thank the board, school administrators, teachers, and staff for keeping our kiddos safe already. We all know how deadly COVID is and the new Delta variant is more contagious and spreadable than the other variants. It has been mentioned that the Delta variant is being seen more in the younger kids with greater numbers becoming sicker or dying, and it is on the uprise. One parent spoke on Tuesday night about how the death rates are going down. Well, that is because the majority of those getting sick have been vaccinated and not dying. The ones who are not vaccinated are the ones dying. I have been a mom in the Melville School District since 2010 and have loved being in this district. But right now, I'm a little ashamed that we are even having these issues regarding masking or not. If you say we need to think of the kiddos, then that's what we have to do. We need to think of others and not just ourselves. My daughter will be a senior this year and she wants to have as normal of a year as she can. That, without having to possibly quarantine. That is why my family is vaccinated. And yes, my daughter will continue to wear her mask. Yes, many of the kids hate wearing the mask, but it saves lives. Masking in middle and high school should not be optional. Think about this for a second. How would you feel if you have a family member who has underlying health issues, is at high risk, and lives with you? Your child goes to school without a mask and brings COVID home and that family member dies. You would think twice and maybe put the blame on yourself. I personally hate that people are dying from this every day. But as a parent, I would want masks worn to prevent more deaths. The CDC and AAP say that masks should be worn. So in closing, I would ask the board to take all this and the scientific data into account. I am asking you to vote to mandate masks for the 2021, 2022 school year. Again, thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Jenny Gardner. Jenny Gardner, feel free to come off mute and you can begin your public comment.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you to the board for taking the time to listen to parents this evening. My name is Jenny Gardner and I have two children, one at Mosaic and one in sixth grade at Oakville Middle. At Mosaic, my children have been taught to think outside the box, to have a growth mindset and to rise to new challenges. They have also been able to receive an amazing individualized education tailored to their learning levels and needs. You may have heard, or you have heard many parents speak over the last few months. And we can sit here and debate the science until we are blue in the face. But tonight, I am asking that the board have a mosaic mindset, to think critically and outside the box, to find a solution that meets the needs of all of your students. I understand that not everyone's going to be happy with your decision, but there is a path forward that can meet the desires of every student and parent. Those who want to wear masks are welcome to do so. Those who choose not to wear one can be free to do that. And those who want to be fully protected can do so at home with the wonderful virtual schooling program that you have created. I am aware that the CDC and the AAP have recently recommended that all children wear masks at school. Please remember that this is just a recommendation. Did you know that the AAP also recommends that middle school and high school students don't start school before 8:30 in the morning? Melville hasn't decided to follow that recommendation. Did you know that the AAP also recommends that schools provide sleep education to middle school and high school students and staff role modeling for healthy eating? These are also recommendations that Melville has not adopted. To base a mask mandate on cherry-picked recommendations is not a display of the mosaic mindset. I understand that you, as the board, feel you're in an impossible situation and I'm sorry that you feel that way. However, I do not see it that way. In fact, I see that you're in a rare situation of being in an unusually easy position to make a decision that will accommodate all stakeholders. It may just take a mosaic mindset to see that path forward. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak.
Our next speaker is Brenda Kimberlin.
Oh, sorry, I'm trying to mute the recording here. Okay, sorry. Can you hear me okay?
Hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm gonna start a timer for myself here quickly as well. Or, oh, actually, I'm sorry, okay, there's one on the screen. My name is Brenda Kimberlin and you've heard from me before, obviously. I have two children at Melville High School. You know, I know that all of you care about public education very deeply. And, but what I don't understand about that is why you're able to stand by and watch parents and families leave Melville schools over the forced masking of children. We saw it last year. It's continuing this year. Many of us are in parent groups on Facebook and other social media. And every other day, I see someone say, okay, I've given up. I'm not sending my kids back in forced masking. And so who homeschools? Tell me what you know. Tell me what private schools are not going to be masked or who are at least leaning mask optional, if that's something that they think that they can do in the next year. Until recently, I worked for an organization that provided scholarships to students who attend religious schools in St. Louis. I recently left that position because this issue has made me so upset and sick, really, the idea that we're sending a five-year-old to kindergarten in a mask all day. That I want to be able to focus on this and getting our schools and our children and our community back to a normal, healthy place where we can mitigate the risk of COVID without destroying the education of children and the childhoods of these children. Because as we all know, childhood is short and kids aren't as resilient as teachers unions would like you to believe. In that position that I worked in, I knew a lot of admissions coordinators. And I can tell you that over the last year, Melville has been doing their job for them. I know one admission coordinator in the Melville School District that said every time Melville sent out an email last year waffling on whether or not it was going to listen to the parents who wanted to go back to school or it was going to fall to the teachers unions and screw around for another couple of months or weeks or whatever, they walked in those mornings to full voicemails of parents who wanted to set up tours to go to their schools. A lot of those parents did. And now we're in the second year and I can tell you, those parents have re-enrolled. The only ones who haven't re-enrolled are parents who decided to give up on St. Louis County in general and to move out to areas where they know that their children can attend school safely without being forced to mask and without the pressure to vaccinate for an emergency use vaccine. So if you really truly care about education as much as you say you do, you will find a way to make this work, to give children their ability to breathe freely, make friends, and learn and see what other people are saying to them. Or you'll continue down this path. And in several years, you'll find your school population diminished, your funding diminished, teacher cuts, the like. That's what's coming, Melville. The choice is yours. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Krista Haley. Krista Haley, you can come off mute and provide your public comment.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, before I start, in the chat, it says it's disabled and Studio 3 cash is Kendra Nichols.
Thank you for that.
No problem. Okay, I'm ready. I want to share my personal experience with COVID and my daughter's experience with forced masking for seven to eight hours per day. I know others have different experiences, but this is what my family went through. Our household had COVID a few weeks ago. It wasn't fun, no viruses. For the adults, it was an exaggerated cold, sore throat, cough, low fever for a few days, and feeling tired. My children got away with just a cough. We stayed home, rested, and ate healthy. Happy to say we're all better and back to normal. Now we have antibodies, which according to data presented to the Israeli Health Ministry on July 13th, 2021, means we are 700% less likely to get COVID than those who are vaccinated. I'm not trying to tell people to get or not get a shot. Everyone has to make that decision on their own. But we need to keep in mind, in addition to shots, natural immunity is something many of us now have. Getting to the masks my kids were forced to wear seven to eight hours daily. The masks caused my kids daily fatigue, acne, and horrible headaches. I will never forget holding my daughter's hair for her while she was vomiting because her headache from being in a mask all day long was unbearable. This is why masks are not one size fits all. I know some kids didn't have issues with the masks and I'm thankful for that. But my daughters did and their, their health matters too. As soon as summer came around and the masks were gone, so were the problems they were causing. I take issue with universal masking because I had to see the harm they were causing my daughters. Why should they be forced to endure that? Dr. Michael Osterholm, a Biden COVID advisor, has said, quote, "We know today that many of the cloth face coverings people wear are not very effective in reducing any of the virus movement in or out." He suggested N95 masks would be better protection. The great thing about N95 masks is they protect the wearer. If a child is wearing one of those masks and is near a mask-free child, that mask will offer the masked child protections. Dr. Marcella Munias- Dr. Marcella Munias Smith, another Biden administration doctor, was quoted saying, "Thankfully for children, the risk of severe COVID remains still very small. The risk of hospitalization remains very minimal." My question to the board, how are you going to make sure that children who are suffering side effects from the masks are able to attend in-person schooling mask-free? Are taxes paid for in-person? These children should not be forced to wear something that is causing them more harm than good. One last thing, I have been privately messaged by many district employees supporting optional masks. Not all teachers support the NEA stance. There are many who don't. But they feel they can't speak out, so I'll do it for them. Make masks optional for students and staff. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kristen Palmer. Kristen Palmer, you can come off mute and provide your public comment.
Hi, thank you for allowing the opportunity to be able to speak today. I have two children in the Melville School District, an eighth grader and a third grader, so I'm mainly speaking for elementary and middle school. I have a lot to say, so I'm gonna speak quickly. I'm an occupational therapist and I work in two local hospitals and a long-term acute care facility. Basically, I work with a lot of COVID patients. I help them physically recover and get their strength and independence back. You can imagine, I've seen a lot this past year. I'm here to ask that we please listen to the medical professionals and please require masks. I've seen what COVID does. I'm seeing the residual effects. I'm seeing people get COVID for the second time around. I've seen the scary new variant. And we know this new variant has a greater impact on our children. Some quotes from some articles yesterday, local news articles. "We've gone from just a week from having 13 kids in pediatric with COVID to 20 this week, many of whom are in critical condition in our ICU units," Dr. Clay Donegan. Another article from yesterday, "The Chief Clinical Officer for BJC Healthcare was quoted as saying these children are fighting for their lives." Children COVID cases in the U.S. have jumped 84% in the past week. This week, the American Academy of Pediatric States that almost 72,000 cases were added compared to the 39,000 cases that were reported last week. You cannot deny math. The numbers are rising among our children. I'm here to speak up for the children that can't be vaccinated. I'm here as the healthcare worker to say that masks are important and effective. In the hospital setting, I have also worked with people whom tested positive after therapy has begun. Unfortunately, this means I've simply worn a mask and no further PPE. I have never contracted COVID. Masks aren't fun, but they work. The argument that they restrict your breathing is unfounded. Millions of people wear masks every day. Furthermore, my asthmatic daughter wears a mask during sports and other activities, and she does just fine. Masks should be mandated for the health and safety of our children. I don't think there should be an option for peer pressure on our children to wear or not wear a mask. We've already heard some of these parents yelling and crying over this topic. Who's to say these strong emotions won't be passed down to their children? Who's to say these children won't criticize other children for wearing masks for their safety? Some argue that those who prefer masks should do Melville at home. I'd like to say that option is also available to those who don't want to wear a mask in school. Requesting masks is not about living in fear. It's not about politics. It's a response to a global pandemic. I mean, honestly, this just feels like a bad dream that right now as we fight for our beliefs and our children, there are local children fighting for their lives. These are facts. Masks work. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Malita Hale. Malita Hale, you can come off mute and start your public comment.
Malita, are you?
I am.
Okay, we can. You can start your public comment.
Thank you.
Parents are best equipped to decide whether they want their children to wear masks in school. People want to say that they're basing their opinion on science, but they are not. They are basing their opinion on emotion. There is no evidence to support the argument that masks prevent the transmission of respiratory illness or viruses at all. And there is substantial evidence that show children are medically, physically, and psychologically harmed by mandatory mask mandates. Kids need to breathe, not wear masks. The kids need to be kids. Let them act normal again. Stop putting fear into the children with masks. The children can't see emotion? This is too part of learning. Don't deny children of proper in-person education. In closing, I'd just like to say I'm putting each and every one of the board members that are present here tonight on notice. If you require masks of the student, it is fine. But in the next sentence, you have to allow them to have a religious and medical exemption. If you do not allow and tell the people and the children this, then it is very possible and probable that you're committing a fraud. Fraud is a criminal offense. I really strongly encourage you to look at this and allow the students to have their religious and medical exemption. This is a federal mandate. The state mandate does not apply. Therefore, be in a federal charge of fraud if you do not allow the student religious and medical exemptions. More importantly, I'm telling you this because if one of these children sadly put a mask on because they thought they had to, then you're committing fraud, which opens you up to a civil lawsuit if that child is damaged. I'm saying this out of concern. I don't want to see these charges against each of you in a civil lawsuit or federal criminal charges brought against you. Please, if you do decide mask mandates, that you tell the people they have a religious and medical exemption. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Suzanne McGinnis. Suzanne McGinnis, you can come off mute and provide your public comment.
Okay, thank you again for this opportunity to speak. What I heard Tuesday night is that we all want what is best for our kids, which is to be healthy and in school. I hope to never hear the word pivot again when it comes to the school schedule. Bouncing back and forth from in-person virtual was not good for anyone last year. I want our students to be in-person the entire school year. We're just a few weeks away from putting kids in crowded classrooms many hours a day, five days a week. The mask is a tool along with hand washing, distancing, and cleaning to keep our kids in-person this fall. Tonight, you, the board, get to make the decision about starting school this year with or without masks. No matter what you decide, people are going to be unhappy. As you make the decision, please listen to the scientists, local hospital pediatricians, listen to the healthcare workers on the front line who are mentally, physically, and emotionally exhausted. Make the best decision to protect all the students in the district. I could go on and on about the pros and cons of wearing a mask, but I think already knows that information that if you have something, even if you cover your mouth with your hand, you block the spit from going places. Reading the mask mandate that was posted, parents do not want that do not want their kids to wear a mask have the option of Melville at home. Or they can go to their doctor and get a note that says, "My child cannot wear a mask." There are options available in this mandate. This mandate is also not forever. It has parameters. And as the cases go back down, hopefully, we can once again remove the mask, and hopefully that will be the last time we have to wear the masks. But parents, especially parents, no matter what the board decides, we have to come together to support the teachers and the staff. We have to show our kids how to respect the rules and authority, even if we don't like them. Because that, as parents, is something that we need to instill into our kids. In closing, spit travels, please cover your face. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kendra Nichols. Kendra Nichols, you can come off mute and provide your public comment. Kendra, can you hear us? You need to unmute, and then you can start your comment.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Okay, hello, my name is Kendra Nichols, and I'm the parent of a Melville fourth grader, and I have an incoming kindergartner. This is my second time speaking to the board regarding making masks optional. But I have sent countless emails and data supporting my request. There are no standards on child-side masks or data proving that they do any good, but there is numerous studies that report how harmful masks are. I sent the three pages from the Attorney General lawsuit regarding children being masked. There are several very good sources, and I do hope the board took the time to review them. I know you are receiving numerous emails, requests, making masks optional. Parents are pleading with you because our children are suffering emotionally, socially, physically, mentally, and academically. This has to stop. I feel like we are being politely ignored. We know our children best. We are their voice. We are telling you, they are suffering. I have said this before, but I feel like it needs to be said again. I love my children more than anything in this world. I assure you, I have assessed all risks, and I am 100% certain the risks my children face wearing a mask all day at school far outweigh the risk of COVID, including the Delta variant. I keep hearing, "Follow the science." That is exactly what we are doing. Our children are the least vulnerable group, yet we are imposing the most restrictions on them at school. We aren't telling parents who want to mask their children that they can't. We are saying our children deserve a choice. This has been going on for nearly two years. Our children and staff have been faced with one challenge after another. My children, along with many others, have returned to a normal life this summer. They're happy, healthy, and they're living life. Our school year is quickly approaching, and my children should be excited. Unfortunately, that is not the case. Our children and our staff deserve a normal start to their school year. Teachers are not the mask police. Most do not even want that responsibility, and it takes time away that they could be spent educating our children. It is time we listen to the science and the parents and put a stop to our children being pawns in a political game. I realize your decision is not an easy one. Give that responsibility and that burden back to the parents where it belongs. This is not about my children being uncomfortable. This is about my children's health and their well-being. Keeping this mask policy without giving us a choice or offering exemptions is denying my children a fair education. The parents deserve the final say. Leave the health considerations up to us, the parents. Like I always say, I love our district, I love our school and our teachers. That is why I'm fighting, and I will not stop. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Meredith Summanek. Meredith Summanek, you can come off mute and provide your public comment.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Meredith Summanek. I'm a parent of a fifth grader at Higginman Elementary. I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to voice my opinion and appreciate the time that you're all taking this evening. I'm speaking in support of a mask mandate to protect students, teachers, as well as support staff. Masks are not a political statement. They're a medical item that can help to protect everyone. As a member of our great Americans experiment, I think it's important that we recognize that our rights come also with responsibilities. It's our responsibility as citizens to come together and protect and care for each other. As COVID continues to evolve now more than ever, we need to take care of each other and respect each other to the fullest amount possible. And we also need to start by doing that by protecting our most valuable assets, which is our future, through the freedom for our children. I am thankful for the freedom that our society presents and the opportunity that it gives us all to voice our opinions here this evening. But again, I ask that everyone think about the responsibility that's inherent in those rights. I think we also need to sit down and think, and I'd like to just take a moment and share some personal impacts of COVID with myself and my family. I proudly have a stepdaughter in a different school district. Unfortunately, she contracted COVID from her school district, even though they had a full mask policy. Thankfully, unfortunately, she got it because her father was a teacher. But she's still now, six months later, suffering from lack of smell and fatigue. She is 16 years of age. During COVID, I have been the employer of 40 different people, eight of whom contracted COVID even though they were trying to do their best, six of whom have never been able to come back to work. Not because of laziness, which I know that is a thing that people think, but because they physically were incapable of doing so. Today, I found out a five-year-old from a friend of ours is now being tested for Delta virus. I understand the inconvenience. I suffer from asthma. I too am aware of the fact that it can be difficult for people to breathe, but I'll tell you this, I've never suffered wearing my mask, and I will continue to do so. I think it's important to realize that no one knows the long-term impacts of COVID, especially the Delta variant and potentially the Lambda variant. I, as a parent, would not be able to look at myself in the mirror if my son were not able to grow up and fully reach his potential. If he were not able to matriculate from his elementary school, graduate from high school, have his first kiss, potentially go on to college, or lost out on job opportunities because he wasn't healthy and able to participate in society. I am proud of my son and his friends and the way that they have adapted to COVID and wearing their masks. They understand the importance of taking care of themselves and taking care of each other, and I ask that you make sure that masks are part of our curriculum. Thank you.
That is all of our public commenters for the evening.
Okay. So I want to thank all of our speakers tonight. We do appreciate the time you spend sharing your thoughts and the stability in which you have done so. Thank you very much. I'm glad we were able to do more than the 30 minutes we had originally scheduled. Next up, we have an update on COVID-19 data and recommendations from Dr. Gans.
Well, good evening. On August 5th, 2020, the Board of Education met to review data, guidance, considerations, and recommendations before making the decision to start the last school year virtually. A year later, we are reviewing similar information. Throughout the pandemic, we have looked at guidance from the CDC, state health- Throughout the pandemic, we have looked at guidance from the CDC, state health, and county health. Early on, we also used items from Harvard's Global Health Institute. Last August, we were looking at CDC metrics to help guide decisions. The CDC had five categories of risk based on the 14-day case rate, positivity, and mitigation strategies. Later, the metrics changed to four categories of risk. The case rate metric changed to a seven-day rate, and the mitigation strategies were no longer part of the rubric. Mitigation strategies did, however, remain in the guidance. We have tracked cases throughout the pandemic. We have seen cases increase, decrease, and hold steady. More recently, we're seeing a marked increase. As vaccinations became available in a tiered manner and then on to those aged 12 and above, we have seen a shift in cases. Before vaccines were available, about 14% to 15% of cases in our zip codes were attributed to youth ages 0 to 19. Since mid-March, this shift has occurred. Youth have now accounted for nearly 23% of cases in our zip codes since mid-March and have been 24.9% of our cases during the last two reporting cycles. The latest cycle ended Monday, and a new report will soon be released. Regardless of the data lens, we see a similar shape emerge. Whether it is the seven-day sum in the previous slide, the 14-day sum in this slide, or the positive rate, positivity rate in this slide, the same overall pattern comes through. Over the summer, we have seen positivity rates go from less than 5% to consistently over 10% since July 19. The transmission rate was below 1 during late April, all of May, and into early June. It went above 1 on June 12th and has remained so since. The CDC case rate shows a similar pattern to the other slides and more recently, shows a marked increase since mid-June. The data also includes now the ability to look at just 12 to 17-year-olds. Here, we can see that about 1 in 5 Missouri youth ages 12 to 17 have completed vaccination. If we look more closely at our zip codes, we can see that 63128 has a greater saturation of vaccinated individuals. We can also see age bands for the county. These bands don't align with the state band of 12 to 17 for comparison, unfortunately. In an earlier slide, we noted the latest CDC metrics. Each Thursday, we evaluate our metrics against this rubric. In mid-May, we were getting close to both metrics being in the low transmission category, and the Board of Education set that as a metric at which the district would become mask optional. Since mid-June, numbers started rising, and we have been in the high transmission category for three weeks. As we look at transmission across the country, we see that many places are in high transmission. We also know that context is different from place to place. I was on a Zoom call yesterday with over 100 superintendents across Missouri. Some counties have small populations, so not many cases put them in the red. One superintendent spoke about having three cases in the county where he lived. Yesterday, we had 53 cases in our zip codes. The context is different. I mentioned at the outset that we were having a similar conversation on this date last year. If we look at data in the lead-up to how we opened last year and compare it to where we are this year, we could see that the positivity rate is higher this year than last. The CDC case rate is very much in line where we were last year. And here's what happened in the case rate as we progressed through the fall. The 14-day sum of cases looks very similar to last year as does the transmission rate, although thankfully, it does look to be a little bit lower at this point. As we look back to last August, the conversations were about whether to start the year in our at-school blended or connected model. The board chose to start the year virtually, and we started moving early grades to the blended model in mid-September. Quarantines and workforce sustainability were big concerns at the start of the year, and that proved to be the case throughout the year. One year later, and our data is in a similar place. With vaccines available to those 12 and older, it was believed that this coming school year would be minimally impacted. But vaccination rates are lower than expected. Mitigation strategies aren't in widespread use, and the more transmissible Delta variant appears. We aren't talking about starting the school year in a blended or connected model, though. The question is mitigation strategies, namely masks. Occasionally, I make reference to being focused on COVID-19 in central office since March 9, 2020. Over that time, the conditions have changed, and so has the guidance. Early on, it was changing rapidly. It has been doing so again as case rates have increased. We saw two changes from the CDC in July. Guidance from the St. Louis Education Task Force has also changed. The task force is made up of district leaders, a number of pediatricians and infectious disease specialists. The Children's Service Fund has a representative. Independent schools in the region are represented, as are county health officials. In order to start open and stay open, the task force recommends universal masking indoors at schools. We have also received recommendations from local medical providers. These are congruent with the guidelines from the St. Louis Education Task Force for universal masking while indoors. CDC guidance on July 27th not only called for universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to school regardless of vaccination status, but also now recommends testing for vaccinated individuals following a known exposure. Quarantine rules have changed over time. The rules were pretty strict for most of last year, but we were able to move to a modified quarantine rule as cases diminished. Quarantine guidance changed in the late spring again to exclude vaccinated individuals from the need to quarantine. These changes toward the end of last school year significantly reduced the number of students, staff, and teachers who needed to quarantine. The more recent guidance has changed quarantine procedures again, making the process different for students and adults. And masking is now a significant variable in quarantining. Now, as a general rule, masking may eliminate the need to quarantine depending on the particular situation. This means that any unmasked student would quarantine if a masked student tests positive. It also means that if an unmasked student tests positive, entire classrooms would likely be quarantined. As Dr. Smith from Tesson Ferry Pediatrics notes, masks only work when everyone is wearing them. Contact tracing and the resulting need to stay off campus requires a lot of time. We have to determine close contacts, duration of those contacts, the nature of an activity, whether masks were worn, vaccination status, et cetera. This all means that each case has a uniqueness to it. Similar instances can have different outcomes based on slightly different variables of the case. As we consider all of this information, we also think back to our community engagement efforts in the fall of 2019 around developing the next iteration of our strategic plan. The question that we asked the people early on was about the type of school experience they wanted for their child or grandchild. The answer we heard over and over was, we just want our child or grandchild to have a safe experience. This is something that we have come back to time and time again during internal discussions. If we are knowingly and willingly going against the recommendation of public health experts, are we doing all we can to keep students safe? Another piece that we've talked about a lot internally is how do we keep kids in school as much as possible? All but one of our leadership team members in central office have a student in a Melville school or a school in another county district. None of us really like to wear masks. Our kids don't either. Parent feedback, as well as our experiences, have caused us to look at lots of options. We've reviewed the benefits and drawbacks of each. The option a lot of people ask about is having some classrooms masked and some unmasked, and we've really looked at that possibility. Dr. Smith and I are former high school principals. High school schedules and staffing really don't allow for mirrored classes to happen at the same time. Some classes only have one section and barely fit into a schedule. Logistically, it doesn't work. Mr. Smith is a former middle school principal. Given that middle schools are scheduled in much the same basic ways as high schools, the same problem emerges. Dr. Bressler and Dr. DeKemper are former elementary principals. We also had deep conversations with several of our elementary principals. Each of them reported that student placement in classrooms is one of the most strategic decisions they make. Teachers, counselors, and principals spend time developing class lists to balance classrooms as much as possible. They know that some students do really well together in the same room, while others simply cannot be together. Masked and unmasked classrooms create significant challenges with classroom placement, class size, reading groups, interventionists, co-teaching, and special education services. And our principals don't believe such an option is in the best interest of the kids they serve. This goal of keeping kids in school as much as possible means that we have to look at mitigation strategies. As we take strategies away, the chance of transmission increases. There's been a lot of talk and study about transmission in schools last year, and it was pretty low. Part of that reason is because schools were the place where mitigation strategies were consistently in place. As noted previously, this latest CDC guidance on quarantine will reduce the number of students who need to quarantine. So we couldn't make masks optional. We've heard from parents that want masks to be optional. If you're concerned that your child's health or that of your family could be compromised by a student attending, by a student attending the same class without a mask, you're not apt to want a mask optional environment. It also means that modified quarantines cannot be used. It means the newest quarantine guidance can't be used. The result is more students required to be off campus. Some had to quarantine multiple times last year. That would likely be the case again. We could also require masks. We've heard from parents that want masks to be required. And this option means that we get to use the latest quarantine guidance, and fewer students will be required to be off campus. Parents asking for a mask optional environment don't want this option. Some people will be angry about a mask requirement. I'm sure they'll also be angry when their child has to face quarantine. Overall, masks mean that more kids get to be in school on a daily basis. This, coupled with this safety being the number one item during community engagement, leads us to a set of recommendations. We recommend that we require masks for our workforce or students in grades pre-K through 12 and visitors while indoors. We are also requiring principals to be strategic about mask breaks for students. We want to be clear in our definition of what a mask is. Masks with holes or valves do not meet that definition.
We are working to get Dr. Gaines back into the meeting.
Okay, sorry about that. We'll allow exemptions for masking in certain circumstances. We did this last year in some cases. We do have students who, for them, masking presents a health and safety issue. There is a mechanism to address that, and any parent with such a concern should speak with their building principal. Notice of these possible exemptions went to parents on July 23rd, and it has been on our website since that time as well. We'll adhere to the federal mandate on masks while on public transportation, which includes school buses. Students who refuse to wear a mask and have not been granted an exemption will not be granted attendance to in-person learning. We are viewing masks as a required dress code element. In some school environments, we require safety equipment to protect oneself and others. Wearing a mask helps protect not only oneself, but others from both the virus and possible quarantines. We will continue to follow public health guidance relative to quarantines. We have established defined metrics for transitioning grades 7 through 12 and then pre-K through 12 to a mask optional environment. The resolution also allows for adjustments as CDC guidance changes. If we look at this in a grid, the metrics for moving to a mask optional environment would look something like this. When both metrics in a category are met for three consecutive coinciding days, we would make a change in masking status. This concludes our presentation on data, guidance, considerations, and recommendations. A resolution reflecting these recommendations has been prepared for consideration by the board. My team and I would be happy to respond to any questions.
Do any board members have any questions?
I do. Could you, Dr. Gaines, could you just explain the difference between the option for unmasking based on the transmission levels and how that differs with the elementary versus middle school and high school level? Like elementary being transmission, but high school and middle school, I believe I saw it was low to mid or might not be using the correct terminology.
So the standard that the board adopted in May for elementary to be mask optional was that low transmission. So we pretty much maintained what the board had added in May. And then we also have for grades 7 through 12, when we hit that moderate transmission category, which is about the point where the CDC and health experts before had suggested masking based on vaccination status.
Okay.
Actually, I've got a question just to make sure I'm understanding a point on positive case. Someone has a positive case regardless if it's classified as a breakthrough case or it's someone who's unvaccinated, it's going to be treated the same, correct?
So I need to understand what you're asking a little bit better. I'm not sure I understand.
Well, basically, as we've found, Delta is a rather transmissible version of COVID. And obviously, if someone is vaccinated, they're less likely to have symptoms that will become prevalent until probably they become more contagious. I'm assuming if they go through and they're testing positive regardless if they're vaccinated or not, they're going to be treated the same either way, correct?
Yes, even in an exposure, if a vaccinated person is exposed, if they begin to show symptoms, then they need to isolate as well in quarantine. And then a vaccinated individual who tests positive is treated as a positive test regardless of vaccination status. Positive test is a positive test.
Okay, that's what I assumed. I just want to make sure I was clarified. It was clarified to my understanding. Thank you.
Any other board member questions? Okay.
I don't have any particular questions. I do have a few things I'd like to say, but do we want to go through all the questions first, Kevin?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. If nobody has any questions, I think we can go ahead and start. So before we discuss the resolution point by point, the board directors are going to have an opportunity to speak. Over the past year and a half, there's been a lot of work to get to this point, a lot of different ideas, discussion. And I hate to say it pivots as conditions have changed. Each of us will get an opportunity to speak on this topic before we move on to the next step of the meeting. Go ahead, Peggy.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Gaines, for a very detailed presentation so that hopefully we can understand and lead up to understanding the resolution and what decisions we need to make. As we all know, over the past year, there have been contentious debates over how schools contribute to the spread of COVID virus and whether and when they should close. Now, the debates are concerning whether and when the students and staff should wear masks in order to stay open. As the new school year begins, the CDC, the AAP, and many other experts agree that reopening schools should be a priority. It is the Melville School District's priority to have all schools open for all students and have all students in the classroom while avoiding quarantines. We all know that closing schools and quarantining kids poses a danger. Learning loss widening educational disparities and worsening mental health, not to mention the hardships it imposes on parents. Over the last few months, we have heard from parents saying concerned about their children wearing a mask while at school. We have also heard from parents that are concerned about their children not wearing a mask. There are concerns about their health, both physically and mentally. I, and I think I speak for everybody, we hear those concerns and we understand those concerns. We take those concerns very seriously, and I commend all the parents for stepping up and having their voices heard. At the suggestion of a few of the parents that do not want their children to wear a mask to school, Kevin, Tori, and I met as the executive officers of the Melville Board of Education with principals, administrators, superintendents, executive directors, nurses, and the district's lawyer to explore the possibility of segregating and splitting classrooms or even splitting up schools so that we could accommodate both the unmasked children and the masked children. We wanted to explore whether there might be some possible solutions to satisfy everyone involved while keeping all of the kids and staff safe and protected. We wanted to hear from the people with their boots on the ground in our schools, so we asked for a meeting to explore possible options. In this meeting, we discussed possible segregation of classrooms or even something as extreme as switching up whole schools based on masked versus unmasked kids. And we discussed and brainstormed any other possible options for accommodating a mixture of masked and unmasked kids and staff. Unfortunately, it was an overwhelming consensus that splitting up kids based on mask choice simply would not work. Much time and effort is put into putting kids into classrooms that will enhance their strengths and combat their weaknesses. Teachers, co-teachers, and interventionists are carefully chosen for each child. We were informed that randomly grouping kids based on mass choice simply would not serve the children's academic needs to the best of our district's ability. The school staff and administrators do whatever it takes to ensure all students realize their potential. It would weaken our academic system of providing the best education available to all Melville School District children. It would cause logistical nightmares. In this meeting, we also discussed the physical and emotional problems the staff at our schools had seen of kids wearing a mask at school. How many times kids had fainted, had breathing problems, or had to see the school nurse with any problems related to mask wearing. We explored whether the staff at our school saw any indicators of severe problems with children wearing a mask and if they saw any negative signs of masks affecting our children socially or psychologically. We discussed in depth that the ultimate goal is to keep our kids in school and in the classroom and in front of their teacher. The teacher that was chosen for that child because it would enhance that child's academic abilities and who would best tend to their social and emotional needs. The district has had a COVID back-to-school committee working on the logistics of running our schools during a unprecedented pandemic since early 2020. They continue to do tireless work as COVID infections and outbreaks in children are changing from what we saw during the pandemic's first year. During the first year of the pandemic, the Department of Health rarely saw outbreaks of sustained transmission among young children. Our schools did an excellent job of implementing mitigation practices like masking and distancing. Driven largely by the Delta variant and the lack of mitigation practices like masking, this is unfortunately no longer the case, and we are seeing outbreaks and transmission occurring in such settings as daycare and summer camp. This is not the place we want to be. Because of the fluidity of changing metrics surrounding community spread, the increased transmissibility of the Delta variant and changing vaccine rates, flexibility is warranted in the operations and policies of the Melville R9 School District to promote student safety while delivering in-person instruction and related school district services and activities. I acknowledge the risk of severe illness and death in children due to COVID is very low, but does exist. And the Delta variant is changing that landscape to some degree. One child is one child too many. In the last month, children in St. Louis County have been hospitalized for severe COVID illness, including cases of multi-system inflammatory syndrome. Scientists and doctors are only beginning to understand the ramifications of long-haul COVID or other longer-term consequences from even mild or asymptomatic infections. We don't know how this virus will change and how these changes will impact disease in children. This is why it's important to prevent kids from getting sick in the first place. For the children that truly suffer from a physical or mental ailment due to mask wearing, we have included in the resolution that we are introducing and voting on tonight an exemption for any child that has been excused from wearing a mask in writing by a licensed medical doctor. In closing, I would like to say that I understand that much of our community is frustrated. We understand and we feel that too. We would all like to return to our pre-pandemic life. It is an evolving situation that keeps changing, and we are simply trying to keep our kids and staff safe. We are all in this together. We must work together to conquer this virus. The Melville community is exceptional. We have high expectations for our staff and students and are confident they will make informed decisions based on current health conditions, knowing their decisions impact many others. Despite the COVID challenges, we are very excited to have everyone back together soon. We look forward to celebrating a new beginning this year, and that we are back full-time five days a week with more familiar learning experiences for our students and family. Thank you to our entire community for your support.
Thank you, Peggy. Tori, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, and Peggy, thank you. Thank you for explaining in detail the meeting that we had and all of the discussions that took place, because I feel that that's a really important part of all of this. Spending time reflecting on all of the information, all of the data that has been given to us or that we have sought out, that we have found places to look, analyze. Countless emails that I have read, every single one regardless of their point of view. Taking all of that in. It has been a significant year and a half. August 5th, when we all sat in Naughtman Auditorium discussing our back-to-school plan. And the back-to-school plan was, in fact, to start virtual.
Hey, Tori, can I interrupt you for a sec? We lost you for a little bit there after you said it's been a big year and a half. I'm not sure if you wanted to go back or not. Sorry.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you. I have some instability in my, with my internet with where I'm at right now, so I apologize. Thank you.
Tori, I'll raise my hand if you go out again.
Okay, great. Thank, yeah, thank you, Peggy. August 5th, Dr. Gaines mentioned this. A year ago today, we were sitting in Naughtman Auditorium discussing our back-to-school plan, and the back-to-school plan wound up being starting virtual. In some regards, talking about masks and no masks, I feel like we have amnesia and we all need to be reminded of where we were and how far we've gone. I applaud all of the efforts of our district, our administrators, our teachers, and in fact, everyone on the school board for finding ways to navigate this with absolutely no playbook and so many twists and turns and, as Kevin has mentioned, pivots. I don't want to have amnesia on where we were. I want to acknowledge what is most important, which is getting our kids in school. Last year at this time, when we were in that meeting, we were navigating parent concerns with how they were going to manage their children being at home learning when they needed to work. And it's a significant concern. We had concerns coming in of how it was going to look like with the spread of this virus and students and, you know, staff getting sick and managing our staff. And we found out that that was a significant issue over this period of time. And when we fast forward to December 17th, we met again at Naughtman Auditorium for an 82-page presentation about the status of COVID within our school district and how it was affecting everything. And it's where we learned the large increase of students who were failing at this time of year in comparison to other years. It's where we learned the amount of time our administrators and our HR staff were spending on contact tracing, which meant that they could not do their jobs and do anything that benefited the education of the student and support the teachers. We learned a lot at that meeting, and it was eye-opening. But we continued on and we managed to find ways to get kids back in school. And this entire time, up to this day, from the time that our schools were shut down after spring break to now, I have never engaged in a conversation or a disagreement with anyone who was trying to tell me that or help me to see the light and believe that virtual learning is the way to go, and it's better or equivalent to in-person learning. And that is because we have data that supports the fact that it's not. Our job is to find ways to manage and mitigate and keep these kids in school. It always has been and it continues to be. And yes, every day, as a school district, this school district manages and mitigates risks and puts measures into place that keep kids safe and keep kids in our buildings. I've spent so much time in conversation, listening. I have spent so much time as an observer in groups who support unmasking or mask choice. And I have listened and I have read and I have looked at the data that has been shared by them. And I feel with 100% confidence that the data that supports masks and allows for us to stay in school, allows for us to have less risk of quarantine, is the right decision. No decision has been easy. In fact, Dr. Gaines has said before, it's been a series of just bad, bad options, and you have to choose the least bad one. Some of that's changed, some of it hasn't, because we're in a spot where parents are disappointed or parents are angry, and that doesn't feel good. There have been, there has been so much time spent on this and only this for the past year and a half. We have completely gone off track of being able to discuss what is important about our student learning, what is important about our student successes, what is happening in our schools, because it's all about how we're managing and Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Yeah. Where did you last hear me?
Said all we've been doing is managing COVID.
Yeah, all we've been doing is managing COVID. And we haven't been able to celebrate the successes of our schools, and that's difficult. And there have been many sleepless nights for myself, and I know I'm not alone in that. And I also know as a parent, I've had to
Are you there, Tori?
She just texted me and said she totally lost connection.
Okay. We'll definitely give her a chance to get back on if she gets back in. Larry, would you like to speak next?
Yeah, I would. This has been amazing, almost two years now. I've learned more things about, I think, how to help folks and how to really focus on safety, security, and the instruction of children. At least that's, that's what seems to be the common denominator in everything we do. Dr. Gaines gave us, I think, an excellent profile of everything that was going on, but when I went through all of this, I've learned more about CDC data and county data than I ever thought I would. Someday I'll write a book about it, I think. But when I, but there's some, some key events that really show how rapidly the, the numbers have gone up and the problem we're confronted with. On June 4th, we were down to 12 in terms of average number of cases. We thought we were home free, and we thought we were going to be able to, you know, in three weeks, we're home. Everything starts in August, everything's fine. Then by the 16th of June, it was over 100, which as we know is the red zone, and that's where it got serious. By the end of the month, it was at 200. This morning, it was at 220. So we have, we have to take steps, I think, to ensure that the kids are as safe as possible, because safety used to, used to mean safe buses, the doors locked, everybody was okay. But how do you lock doors against viruses? That's what we've learned. We've learned that instruction is best when kids are, kids are together. So we've learned, I think we've learned more about the basics of what we try to do than anything else. Not only ourselves as a board, but certainly our teachers, our parents, everyone has learned more about resiliency and learning than was possible. I think from looking at the resolution, I think it meets the criteria of safety, security and guaranteeing instruction for kids. I have a plaque in, in one of my rooms and it's from "No man is an island." It's one of my favorite poems. And it talks about, you know, how no one really stands alone. We're, we're all together in some way. And there's a line in there that goes, "Any man's death diminishes me." And in the role, I guess as a board member, I want to make decisions and a decision tonight that will protect as many children as possible.
Thank you, Larry. Jean, would you like to go next?
Yes, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I would first of all like to thank everyone who has spent so much time devoted to this topic in researching the possibilities for our kids to have a safe return to school. The data is real, although extremely disappointing. You know, I've always made it my business to view issues from both sides. And this issue is no different. I have grandchildren in the Melville School District, so I'm truly invested. Just a few short months ago, we were headed in the right direction. And I had said something then about maybe we should bend with the progress that's being shown in the data. Well, that progress is gone and has been replaced with an even more dangerous infectious virus that's proving to be more aggressive with young children. I love my grandchildren. And while I hate what they're going through, it's necessary for them to mask up. Even they understand that and they accept it. They don't like it, but they accept it. Every one of us knows how difficult it was for the majority of our students to flourish during virtual learning. We don't want that again. The benefits of in-person learning so far outweigh the inconvenience of wearing a mask that it's not even, it's a no-brainer. Let's keep our kids in school. As a lifelong educator, but more importantly, as a parent and a grandparent and a great-grandparent, I would like to remind parents that you can and you do shape the responses to adversity that your children will display. Please help them learn a willingness to adapt even when it's uncomfortable in order to protect themselves and their friends and others. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Tori, are you able to get back on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I tried to dial in, but I've been unsuccessful. I have unstable internet because of my location, because I'm with my family on vacation. I just want to sum up and to express that no one.
There we go. I think you just came back.
I did. I'm, I'm really sorry. It's my location. I just, this isn't normal. We don't want it to be normal. I'm not considering it normal. I'm not considering it permanent. And I think that's an important position to be in. This is abnormal because we're in a pandemic and we're doing everything we can to educate students. And that is the most important part. I do.
We lost you again, Tori.
Okay, Tori just texted again and said to move on and I want to express our thanks to Tori for dialing in not once, but twice while she is on her family vacation this week for the, these two, to see our special meetings or whatever. So anyway, thank you, Tori, and please just go enjoy your family.
Yeah, I second that. Jeff, would you like to speak next?
Thank you, Kevin. Yes, I'd like to go through and find a commonality with everyone. I mean, we're, we're a community that has a common goal of having our kids be in school, get the best education they can manage in whatever way they can. For some people this past year, it was virtually throughout home, which is how my two kids were because I needed some stability. And for them, it worked for the most part. There was definitely some issues where they wanted to be in class. They wanted to be in class with their fellow students and they missed that. But they also missed the issues of having quarantine, send them home, disrupting home life. This is a situation that we don't have a playbook for. We're writing the playbook for it as we go. And there's been a lot of changes that have happened in the last 17 months with this. Our first concern is how do we finish off the end of the school year last year without being in school? We managed to do it. It wasn't a great solution, but as a solution, we all came together and we all managed to do together because we all have the common goal of wanting our kids to get the best education they can do in our school district. We took the summer off last summer and managed to work into a, try and work into a better position. But COVID is a tricky little virus that changes on its whim and decides to do what it wants to do. So then we started the last school year virtually, which is a difficult decision for everybody concerned. But from the data we had and the things that we saw, it was the best way to do thing. We managed to persevere and got our kids back into school by the middle of the school year. And things were a lot better for that. But the one thing that's never changed is parents' passion for their kids. That's never been something that's wavered in any way, that you wanted to have kids in the school. You wanted to have kids stay home. You wanted your kids in school with masks on or you wanted your kids to be masked. Parents' passion for their kids has been one driving force in our district and it's a phenomenal, amazing thing that we all do because we all want our kids to have the best things that they can have for them. And I've gone through it. I've tried to be educated on this and I've tried to go through and find out the best solutions for this. But there's no one perfect solution for this. There's always going to be people that are going to be unhappy with the decisions that get made and the attempt to try and find the best solution for the most people possible. If we're trying to keep our kids in school and we're trying to keep our kids safely in school, we have to, we have to make them safe for as many things as possible. And the best way to do that against the current COVID problem is a multi-layered strategy, which unfortunately involves masks. It's an unpopular solution for some people. And it's not a great solution, but it's one we have to try and do to keep everyone in school in the best way we can to keep everyone safe, to keep things as stable and as problem-free as we can. There's always going to be changing data on this situation. It's never going to be static and as we've seen now, the data on Delta proves that it's going the wrong direction. Cases are going up. And since we have people that are vaccinated, the virus is doing what it does. It finds places to go, which unfortunately is younger people. And it's also people that are vaccinated because it's a changing virus. If we want to get back to normal, we have to do everything we can to try and get to having Delta or whatever variant or whatever form of COVID is nowhere to go and try and get it to a state of being endemic. So we just have to deal with it like it's the flu, which thankfully this past flu season, we basically had almost no flu season. So something that we did obviously was a right move if there's been no cases of flu and other related winter time illnesses that we had to deal with. If that was masking, if that was modifying our social behaviors, if that was social distancing, there's something we obviously did over the winter that made things better in regards to the flu. And I hope that as we can work together as a district, but work together as parents, work together as staff, work together as administrators, work together as students to all try and find a commonality to get kids in school, keep them in school and try and give them the best learning that we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Patrick, would you like to go?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Kevin. I just wanted to give a quick introduction since I haven't necessarily had a chance to meet people since I was the most recently elected board member. My name is Patrick McElvy. I am a Melville School District alumni and a lifelong resident of Oakville and Melville. Our listening Tuesday, our listening session Tuesday was very difficult. I heard from a parent in our district who is a proponent of masking our students this fall. This parent is someone who contracted COVID-19 and had to be put on a respirator, was given a 50% chance to live and eventually had to relearn how to walk again. While she could have spent more time talking about herself and her medical journey, she did what most parents in the Melville School District would do. She talked about the memories she missed out on with her children, one who graduated from our district and another who is a senior in our high school and one of our high schools. We have heard from other parents who believe that masks should be optional this fall. They want a return to what many of us took for granted as normal prior to COVID-19. They share stories about how their children are struggling to wear masks and how the pandemic has negatively, negatively impacted their kids. This is also very difficult to hear. Both of these groups of parents just want what they think is best for their kids. They want their kids to be as safe and happy as possible when they walk into our schools. This is something I know our school district and its staff work tirelessly to provide, even when circumstances are as difficult as they are now. I ultimately believe the CDC, St. Louis Metro Pandemic Task Force and the list of 450 local physicians who signed a letter this week want what is best for all of us. My former pediatrician who cared for me until I went to college, signed the letter that I speak of. I have made the decision, I have made a decision for what is best for our school district. This decision has been incredibly difficult. I read the news, try to keep up with the latest peer-reviewed studies and I call people who work for our district to see what they think is best for their children and the ones they teach, coach or counsel. I also take the words I hear during the open comment periods at board meetings and the emails that I read very seriously. I hope I can do an even better job of outreach in the future. I have enjoyed the added output I have received over the previous few days.
Thank you, Patrick. I might talk a little bit about some of the events of this pandemic that have occurred and some of the things that we've done. For me, the long hours of research and responding emails started last fall. Throughout the fall, I received many emails from people who were concerned about coming back to in-person school. I knew from data we had back then that masks and social distancing were working. But the quality of the mask mattered, that in-school spread tended to be very low. This low spread was a function of both mitigation methods being used and the COVID variants, primarily Alpha, that we had at the time. My emails aligned with these facts and I supported an entry, an early return to in-person school. We've always known wearing masks in school is not the most fun. None of us really like wearing masks. We also knew that some children did better than others with masks. We heard a different take around more serious issues with masks in schools when it was brought up in public comments at a board meeting in late spring. I remember a number of us wanted to follow up and were concerned about what we had heard. I reached out to learn more and also to express that I did not believe we were a board that wanted to continue masks beyond where they would be needed. Presented my thoughts on how there was a point of low community spread where the risk for even an unvaccinated person is very low. Something I still believe and that the CDC and St. Louis County Department of Health agree on. Leading up to the May 20th board meeting, we all heard from people who wanted us to remove mask requirements in our schools. I studied data, read studies, watched related podcasts and news stories, including the many links sent to us in our school email accounts. And I even personally reached out to experts to get a better understanding around if there was a documented set of metrics spelling out acceptable, safe levels where our children could reliably go safely without masks in our schools. I was approaching this from two opposing perspectives at the time. One was from the side of wanting to make masks optional in a safe way that would not increase illness or children being quarantined away from school. The other was in consideration of the people who would be concerned masks were being removed too soon and it wasn't safe. The answer had to be from health experts in order to know and demonstrate that it was the correct one to use. The costing, the cost of making a mistake is too high. Both the members of our community and frankly, to my own sense of responsibility to our community, we are in a position where we have to make, not want to make, but have to make a decision that has potential long-term impacts on our students, families, community members and staff. Despite searching and not being able to find this set of metrics for many days, I had a return call from Spring Schmidt with the St. Louis County Department of Health the day before our May 20th board meeting. I explained the situation to her and to my surprise, she told me they did have a metric for this. She explained that the CDC low transmission risk metrics were the level at which mandatory masks could be removed in a safe way that had low risk. I already knew our community numbers were not far from the low transmission thresholds and that our trends were in our favor. I pulled it all together and brought all this information to the May 20th board meeting and we passed in addition to the plan that would allow pre-K and elementary school students to be mask optional once we reach these metrics for three consecutive days. We had a database metric that would be unlikely to give everyone what they wanted immediately. But was based on data and metrics defendable to everyone on all sides of this issue. My hope was that everyone would see the science behind the metrics and agree it was a good compromise. It would demonstrate to one side that we were listening by finding and publicly identifying the goalposts for where we would be making masks optional. It would demonstrate to the others that these numbers were safe and we would see in-school numbers drop as the CDC metrics dropped, alleviating fear that we had gone too soon. For the people who knew the metrics, they knew we were very close to the goal line. Needing to reach nine new cases per week for 100,000 people, we got as low as 12. I was sure we would meet the threshold of nine cases per week by July and then Delta hit. As cases rose in July, it became obvious that we would not see cases come back down for some time. Still trying to find an answer that would work for everyone, our administration looked at options that could allow parents to choose whether their elementary children would wear a mask. And practically, this would require some type of separation to work. Our school and central office administrators and many others met and investigated options. In the end, the recommendation was that a school either needed to be all wearing masks or all mask optional and that trying to have a hybrid would have large logistical and academic pitfalls that would harm the level of educations our students would receive. The recommendations came from a quality of education lens and it was very compelling. We also looked to our LIVO council. The advice we received was to base decisions on standards such as the CDC and St. Louis County Department of Health that although there is not case law yet available, it could be considered reckless and/or negligent to operate in a way that does not follow health standards. We were also told children with disabilities should be considered on a case-by-case basis. So many experts have said in the past few days and weeks, Delta has changed everything. A much more transmissible variant for which we do not yet have near the vaccinated or natural immunity in our community to limit the spread. The seven-day sum of new cases in the 63125, 63128 and 63129 ZIP codes has risen from a low of 12 cases on June 4th to 220 cases yesterday, up 18 times. Spring Schmidt, the deputy director of St. Louis County Department of Public Health in a release yesterday told us that the prior Alpha variant we saw during last year did not transmit very well between children, but that this is not the case with the Delta variant. What she said transmits as well among children as it does among adults. We are seeing children being affected by COVID more often and while it is rare for young children to have severe outcomes as often as adults, it does happen and we've been told it is happening in St. Louis. We know that our students need instructional time. We know we have an academic loss from last year. Masking keeps children in-person school. Under the new CDC guidelines, if masks are worn by all children in a classroom, then under most conditions, the only quarantine that should come from a student in class who tests positive for COVID is that student. The new CDC quarantine guidelines prioritize masking intentionally and give our students the best odds of staying in school and starting to make up the academic deficit from last. And give our students the best odds of staying in school and starting to make up the academic deficit from last year. We also know this Delta variant will not last forever. Same conditions that would have been safe this summer still exist today. Delta will run its course. In the absence of another variant, we will see case numbers come back down to their prior levels and hopefully lower. As Tori had said before, this is not normal. This is abnormal. This is not where we want to be. Hopefully, this is the last bump in the road. And we will see better days soon coming ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah. Okay, uh, next, uh, Dr. Gaines, should I hand this back to you to go through the resolution line by line? Or how do you want to do this?
Thirdly, I can, I can walk, walk through it. Um, so. We've prepared a resolution based on the recommendations that we're making. Um, and I mentioned earlier, within the resolution, there's a little bit more detail on this. So it provides a little additional clarity. So first, um, we're taking, um. In the resolution to rescind, um, the action that the board took on May twentieth. Um, to give us a fresh point from which to move forward. So are there any questions about point number one?
And we probably have to do that to move forward.
Yeah, I think that one's probably the easy thing to consider. Um, then as we kind of move into number two, number two is a little bit more advanced, has a. Few more pieces of information to it. Um, so we start with the notion, um, that we would require masks indoors. Although, um, upon, uh, further examination. Um, we think that the to-be masked. Should probably be replaced by to wear a face covering. And so that we can establish some, um, common language throughout, uh, the resolution. Uh, any questions about just the number two and then we can go through A, B, C, and D?
Is there a difference between a face mask and a face covering?
To some extent, that's why we have A to define what that is. Um, so with, in the document, we sometimes use face covering. And sometimes we have used masks, so we want to just align all of that with face covering. So that we're using the same language. And then A, we define what a face covering is.
Could I speak on this? Um, a gator will, um, not go with the, um. Sitting snugly over the face and chin. I'm just saying it's, it's contradictory.
That can be removed if the board, uh, so chooses. Um, we did allow the buffs gators, uh, throughout the last, throughout last year.
Okay.
Well, I'm just saying it doesn't, doesn't fit the definition of something that covers the. Um, sitting snugly over nose and under the chin. Well, I think we need to fix one of them or.
Do you have a thought, Chris, from what's happened in the last year with the gators as far as continuing to allow those?
I would, I would say at the, um, at the levels where students were wearing the gators, they were, uh. Allowed if they were covering the face as well as the nose.
Okay. So I'm probably removing snugly or and under the chin would be the.
Right, like your neck.
Yeah. Board members, is there anyone opposed to that? Or anyone who thinks differently? Have any other takes on this?
I think they're fine. They do go on totally and completely under the, um, I mean, nothing coming out from.
They don't fit snugly though, Peggy.
I, I would agree that if we want to move the word snugly, I believe that would solve the problem. I think it would be fine to still continue to allow buffs or gators.
How about this? Coverings must fit over the nose and beyond the chin or lower than the chin.
So hopefully you can see we've been kind of editing the document in, uh, real, real time. So we, uh, as Patrick suggested, taking out the word snugly to kind of, uh, clarify that a little bit. Does that satisfy?
Um, well. You have under the chin. Can we make that? Below the chin?
Actually change that on the screen right there.
I see below the chin as well.
Okay, I can't, I, I haven't figured out how to make my, uh, resolution appear larger yet.
I will read it quickly. The Melville R nine Sport of Education defines a face covering as a cloth. Buff gator and ninety-five or medical-grade style mask. All face coverings must fit over the nose and below the chin. Face coverings with holes or valves are not acceptable.
Yeah, that works for me. At least it's not contradictory anymore. So thank you for that.
Alright, so we're good with A. Moving on to B, again, uh, changed a little bit of the face mask to the face covering. Uh, but here's where we create, uh, the exemptions that, um, we largely had last school year. Uh, where we do allow that in limited circumstances. Uh, namely through a five oh four plan and IEP or written notification from, uh, child's license medical doctor. Um, we will be pushing back on some of those. Um, if we think, um, we may have somebody writing. Something out of their, uh, realm, for example, if, uh, my eye doctor were to write. Um, that, um, a mask causes me skin conditions. Um, I don't know that, um, an eye doctor is the person who should be signing off on that. Um, but a child's primary care physician would certainly be acceptable. Any questions about B?
No.
Just got the one question with. Religious exemptions and I'm not sure. How exactly that would work, but is that something that? Has been looked into or something that we should run past our legal counsel?
So.
Were they allowed before is the other thing.
So we've had conversations with, um, some attorneys around the notion of a religiousity exemption. And, um, their opinions are that. There are thresholds that have to be met for something to be considered a religious exemption. And, uh, given the short-lived history of masks and the requirement, uh, requirement of masks. Um, they didn't deem that there was a religion, a particular religion. That had established, um, that as a standard belief. And therefore, uh, probably would not meet those thresholds. The legal thresholds to be a legal religious exemption. So moving on to number two C. Um, here we address the federal mandate on school buses. As it is a little bit different. Um, because the exemptions are different. And they are directly related to the, um, federal mandate. So the, uh, ability to get an exemption on public transportation is extremely limited. And that's why we pulled this out as a separate piece, um, specifically related to the mandate. Any questions about two C? Alright, so looking at two D, we're gonna make a quick recommended change, um. In here that given that we've provided some exemptions that we add, um. That will not be granted to anyone who does not qualify, um, for. An exemption. Under sub-paragraph two B. And refuses to wear a face covering indoors. Um, as I was going through that presentation, I mentioned that in this area, we are deeming the mask requirement to be a matter of. Um. Dress code. Um, we would not allow a student to come shirtless throughout the day. Um, and be able to attend, so we would give them a shirt or, um, it wouldn't be allowed to attend. So, uh, creating that same mechanism around the masking. Any questions on two D?
Many presentations in-person learning, I'm assuming the same rules would apply for visitors as well as staff.
Yes. Alright, moving on to number three. Um, here we just had him, uh, talk about our continued investment. In Melville at home, which we now largely just call at home as an option. Uh, for those students who choose to participate or not follow our mitigation guidelines. Any questions about number three? Alright, going on to number four, um. Just as, uh, quarantines may change, uh, we'll continue to follow that latest health guidance. Um, on that, we have over the last, um, year plus. Have seen the quarantine rules relax. Uh, we don't know if, um. That will continue to be the case, but here in the midst of Delta, uh, they certainly, uh, did with the masking piece. Um, kind of relaxed from where we were a year ago, which we believe kind of shows the. Um, importance of mask wearing and its effectiveness. Any questions about number four? Alright, and then moving on to number five, um, again, we replace, replace mask with face covering. And here we're looking at grades seven through twelve. Um, going back to the spring, um, as we, as community transmission lowered. And, um, as we got into that moderate zone, we saw lifting of, uh, mask requirements. Around vaccinated and unvaccinated people. And the guidance has been for vaccinated folks to wear masks in areas of substantial or high transmission. Um, so we pulled the face covering requirement back as we begin, as we hit that metric for moderate transmission. Um, any questions with number five?
I'm reading five and six collectively together. It seems like there's a gap hole for sixth graders. That would not be at the age of twelve.
Correct, uh, sixth grade is kind of the real challenge. Um, we can certainly word number six as preschool through grade six. Um, to provide a little bit more clarity, uh, sixth grade is where we just have a mix of eleven and twelve-year-olds. Um, it's also where we have a mix of eleven and twelve-year-olds with, you know, thirteen and fourteen-year-olds. So, um, it, middle school will, uh, certainly presents a little bit more interesting challenges. But as we look at number five and number six together, uh, we can certainly provide a little bit more clarity. Um, by saying through grades six, if that's something the board would rather look at.
I think you should stay with the age because you have kids that might be eleven, po- almost possibly eleven in fifth grade, depending if they're held back a year. So I, I, I think we need to stay with the age rather than the grade.
I actually disagree with that. I think we need to stay with the grade so that we aren't exposing, um, children to non. Because the. Wait a minute, maybe I'm confused, maybe I am confusing myself actually. Are we saying that, um. Everybody gets to take their face covering off at low transmission or only the vaccinated? We.
Everybody at low transmission.
Okay. So. The, uh, the difference would be if, when it gets to moderate transmission, some of the sixth graders.
The way, the way we have it, the way we have it written, sixth graders would not. Make the move when we do a mask-free environment, when we went to moderate transmission.
Yeah, I think it should, I personally think number six should say students in preschool through sixth grade. So that that grade level all stays the same. Because there is that, there is a group of kids there that isn't accounted for, or am I crazy?
I think it lines it up with.
There's that hole between sixth grade because it mentions age eleven because some sixth graders may be eleven and some of them may be twelve years old.
Right, but five doesn't account for sixth graders that are twelve.
To make it a clean line, I think it would have to be grade six. In number six. Because number five is only seven, grade seven through twelve.
I would agree going to grade six instead of age eleven and, uh, line number six.
Yeah, practically the way it would work is probably the same, but it's a little more clear if the grades line up.
There, you were a little bit different on this. What are, what are your thoughts after folks have talked?
I, I. Since number five says, says grade seven through twelve, this one should probably say sixth grade. Although I was eleven when I was in seventh grade, so. What can I say?
And that would be rare happening today because of the school start date, age start dates are, are different than. Yeah.
No, I'm good with that.
Alright, any other questions about five and six?
Yeah.
Alright, then.
My bad, Dr. Gaines. I was gonna say, this would likely be, in my opinion. Due to a possible change in vaccine, that this would be the part of this policy we would change next, right? Like this would potentially be the part of the policy we would amend first if there was a vaccination change with. Um, let's say another vaccine possibly covering this age group or part of it.
I, I think that's very accurate and I think that, that's why we kind of put in number seven. To give us the ability to make some of those moves. Um, and then report that move and get approval at a next regularly scheduled board meeting. So that, you know, if guidance changed two days after a board meeting, we could go ahead and, um, make, make some changes. Make make some changes and then get the board's final approval on those at the next meeting. Gives us a little bit more flexibility and fluidity as things change, but if things don't change. We're not looking at making any changes, only as guidance would change, would we consider doing anything?
Thank you, Dr. Gaines.
So questions about number seven?
No. I'm good.
So as we manipulated the document based on your comments and the change from mask covering to face covering and the little. Edit on 2D, did we capture everything that was talked about?
I believe so.
I have one question I would like to throw out to see if people agree. Does anybody think that number one should be identified a little more than just a blanket? Action taken on May 20th, just some simple line about action taken on mask wearing or something like that, so that. You know, 20 years from now, when we want to reminisce what we did in August of 2021 and May of 2021. We'll remember, oh yeah, that's when we did that. Because, I mean, obviously, you, we are all aware of what happened on May 20th, but somebody else reading it may not.
Well, if they read the third, three, four paragraphs above it, they'll know what's going on.
So we've changed the, added just a little bit of language there as requested to kind of help clarify what was suggested. Is that?
Yep. Yeah, just very simple, but just so that it's clear, in my opinion. Thank you.
Any other questions about the document as a whole?
No.
Add the lines based on COVID metrics?
Say that again, I don't think I caught all that.
Where it says taken on face coverings in line one, can we take it and change it to taken on face covering based on COVID metrics?
In number two, Jeff, where are you?
Number one, so the action taken on face covering based on COVID metrics is how I think it should. Read, so that way it's clarified what the face covering requirements were.
Okay, so the actions taken concerning face coverings?
So we've, so. The the language that we've have in there now, based on the suggestions. Are the action taken on face coverings based on COVID 19 COVID metrics by the Board of Education on May 20th, 2021 is rescinded.
Looks good.
That provides.
I think that looks good. It just gives it specificity of what we base the space covering changes on.
Yes, I like that. Good idea, Peggy.
Alright, then I think we have final wording for a resolution to be considered by the board.
I make a motion.
Excuse me for just a second, I'm sorry. Ken, are you on here? Can you get Tori back on this by any slim chance? Did you block her from? Video in an effort to help her? Connection?
It's Jessica Tori. It's back on through dial-in only.
Okay, and can she be back on visual or no?
Sure, she can join the meeting.
Okay, can we allow her to do that? Can you hear us, Tori?
She is currently muted based on what I'm seeing.
Okay. Hold on. Sorry, but I think it's important that she. Take part of this vote, pardon this. Well, maybe not.
Does anybody have a communication with Tori?
I was texting her.
Yes.
Okay. I've been trying to log back in, but I've been unsuccessful in trying to establish an internet connection. So that's my, that's where I sit. So I have been listening. As best I can.
So are we ready?
I think so.
I make a motion. That we approve the resolution as presented concerning face masks. Our face coverings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Gaines, for walking us through that. Also like to thank everyone in our community who has respectfully shared with us your thoughts and reasoning regarding our return to school. Thank you to the many people in our school district who have put in the time and effort to investigate. Options and to help lead our district through this pandemic. We value your experience, knowledge, and sincere care for our school community. While our current situation is not what we want it to be. We know there are going to be better days ahead, and we hope to tackle them together. Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.